So it looks like we may all be here. So I'll go ahead and get started. Thanks, everyone, for coming. It's our first Meadow Vista Virtual Town Hall meeting. I'm going to read a little introduction about it being an online meeting. So pursuant to the State of California Executive Order. I was worried I was muted for a second there. Pursuant to the State of California Executive Order N 33-20, due to the threat of COVID-19, this Meadow Vista Town Hall meeting will be conducted by webinar and teleconference. There will be no physical location open to the public and/or accessible. County representatives will participate in this meeting by webinar or teleconference. So we are having these town halls in different communities. We want to check in with the community, get information out. We want to hear from residents. So we're holding them in various locations, well, online, but for various communities in different locations. So I'm so glad that we could have this. Supervisor Gustafson is joining us a little bit later. She had to travel out of state to help her dad with some medical appointments. So she will be joining us a little bit later. And with that, I just want to go over the questions. If anyone has a question, we'll have different presentations. I don't know how many people have seen the agenda, but we have a COVID presentation from Dr. Sisson. And then Sherri Conway is doing a presentation on the Business Resource Center. And then we also are hearing about the Rural Main Streets Program from county staff, Nikki Striggin and Katie Jackson. So that will be a little bit later. So we'll have a presentation. There'll be time for questions afterward if you have any questions. So in order to raise your hand to ask a question, if you're on the computer, you just click the little hand button at the bottom middle part of your screen. Or you can click the Q and A portion and type in your question, and we can read it off and ask it that way. And then if you joined us via phone, you raise your hand by pressing star nine. So with that, up first, we have our COVID-19 update from Dr. Sisson, Placer County Public Health Officer.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, hi, good evening, everybody. Happy to be here. I usually start out by sharing the current numbers in Placer County, but I have to say that with several caveats this time because there are some significant statewide reporting issues. But we'll get to that in just a minute. So the latest numbers for Placer County are just shy of 2,000 laboratory confirmed cases. So we're at 1,998, having added 45 cases in the last day. Hospitalizations, we have 67 COVID-19 cases in Placer County's three hospitals. So that's Sutter, Roseville, Kaiser, Roseville, and Sutter, Auburn, Faith. Of those 67, 12 are in the intensive care units. And our deaths from COVID-19 in Placer County have increased to 19. I think we've had four deaths in the last week, several of whom were residents in long-term care facilities. So that is an area of ongoing concern. In terms of, because this is the Meadow Vista Town Hall, I want to share the Meadow Vista specific case numbers. So for ZIP Code 95722, there have been a total of 16 cases of COVID-19 to date. That is cumulative. You can, if you're not familiar with the COVID-19 data dashboard, we did just do an overhaul of that dashboard, and we're presenting many new graphs as well as new data points. So I encourage you to explore that. If you go to placer.ca.gov/coronavirus and then click on Cases, it'll send you to that dashboard. And it is a different layout. We have tabs across the top instead of having everything on one screen, but there's a lot more information there. So I encourage people to explore that. So I started by saying that our numbers are likely an undercount right now. And that is because the way COVID-19 cases are typically reported in California is by laboratories, through electronic laboratory reporting. And for unknown reasons, there is a statewide glitch in electronic laboratory reporting such that messages aren't going from the labs to the state health department through the electronic lab reporting system. And then they're supposed to flow from the labs to the state into a disease reporting system called CalReddy. And then from CalReddy, they flow from the state health department to local health departments. And then Placer County gets a notification that we have a new case. We download that information, and then we follow up with the case and do our case investigation and contact tracing. So right now, that information is not flowing from the lab to the state and therefore not flowing from the state to Placer County. So there are a lot of cases out there that Placer County Public Health is not aware of right now and is unable to do case investigation or contact tracing. So the state has asked labs to report directly to the health department using old-fashioned methods like telephones, spreadsheets, and faxes. But that's going to take some time to transition to that system. So the reports that are coming in are significantly reduced. But this is happening statewide, and therefore, we don't think that it is actually an indicator of disease decline. We think it's an artifact of reporting or lack of reporting. So as a result, the state has frozen the monitoring list. So many of you are probably familiar with that term. The California Department of Public Health created a monitoring list with five indicators to help counties get a sense of how we're doing in controlling coronavirus and its related to case rates over the last 14 days. It's hospitalizations, so the increase in hospitalizations. And it's also what is the capacity of the hospitals in terms of ICU and ventilators. So Placer County has been previously on the list because of our rate of hospitalization increases as well as the lack of availability of ICU beds. We're currently on the list because our case rate over the last 14 days is greater than 100. And we will stay on the list until all of those numbers are below the threshold. But right now, the state has frozen the list, which means no counties will go on and no counties will come off until this data reporting issue is resolved. So there are several consequences of the county being on the monitoring list, the largest of which is the impact on our businesses. Because we are on the monitoring list on July 13th, when the state public health officer issued her latest order, that means that many of our business sectors had to either transition to outdoor operations or close entirely if outdoor operations weren't possible. Those business restrictions will actually remain in place even if Placer County comes off of the monitoring list. It will take a revision, amendment, or rescission of the state order from July 13th to change, to allow those businesses to reopen. What is contingent on us being on the monitoring list is whether schools can reopen for in-person instruction. And so July 17th, the state announced that in a county that was either on the monitoring list or had been on the monitoring list in the last 14 days, their schools could not reopen for in-person instruction. So Placer County being on the monitoring list means that our schools, if they have any plans of opening in the next 14 days, that would have to be done remotely only. There is an exception for elementary schools. The state has crafted and just announced on Monday a waiver process that would allow transitional kindergarten through sixth grade to apply for a waiver to the local health officer in consultation with the California Department of Public Health. So we will be rolling out additional information on that waiver process for Placer County schools later this week. So that is the implication of being on the monitoring list. I think the last thing that I wanted to talk about is testing. Testing has been an area of challenge in Placer County. We have two public free testing sites that we are operating in partnership with the State of California using a contractor called OptumServe. Optum Serve collects the specimens at sites in Truckee as well as in Rockland at the library. And then those specimens are sent to a lab called Quest for processing. And then the results are reported electronically. Unfortunately, Quest is a lab that the demand for their services has exceeded their capability of providing those services in a timely manner. And so currently, people who have had their specimens collected at those two sites in Placer County are waiting an average of 171 hours, which is just over seven days, to get their test results. Although I have anecdotally heard concerns from Placer County residents of waiting over 14 days for test results in some instances. So that's an average of seven days, which means some are faster, but some are slower. Obviously, this is not acceptable. And we are working to remedy the situation, potentially adding new sites and trying to identify different laboratories. But Placer County is not the owner of this contract. The state is. And so we're somewhat limited in working with Optum Serve. So we're exploring other options to get faster turnaround times for testing. One thing that has improved over the last couple of weeks is it is now easier to get an appointment at our Optum Serve testing site. So a week ago, if you developed symptoms or you'd been exposed to somebody with COVID, you would have had to wait seven days just to get in, to get your specimen collected, and then another seven days to get your results. I just checked, and as of today, if you're in Truckee, you can get a testing appointment tomorrow, which is great news. And if you are in Rockland, you can get an appointment on the 10th. So today's the 5th. So a five-day wait because they're not open on weekends. So there is an improvement in getting in for the specimen collection. We still want to see that improve further. And we also want to see the turnaround times at the labs improve. But that is the current situation for coronavirus in Placer County. And I would be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Great, thank you. Does anybody have a question for Dr. Sisson? By clicking the hand button at the bottom, or the Q and A, or star nine if you're on a phone. Wait just a second, see if one pops up. I don't see any questions. Dr. Sisson, thank you for coming and giving us an update. Appreciate it.
Sure, thank you.
Okay, up next, we have Sherri Conway with Placer County Business Resource Center. She is the Economic Development Director.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks, Kelly. I actually want to talk about two things tonight, if your audience will indulge. For those who are unfamiliar, and my trusty sidekick Nicole is here. She's hiding. The Placer Business Resource Center is a program of the Placer County Office of Economic Development. It's about two years and maybe two and a half years old now. And it was stood up primarily to serve our existing business community, but also folks that are interested in going into business for themselves. And so in spite of COVID, we still deliver those services, which include workshops, which are now virtual, one-on-one professional business advising, regulatory and permitting navigation, and hiring assistance. So those four pillars remain strong in spite of the pivot that we've had to take with COVID and not offering those services live and in person. And Nicole's the person you want to call. If you have questions, need help with a loan, or need a business plan, marketing assistance, all of the things that we did before, we're still very much doing now. And then I wanted to also share with you that on July 28th, the Placer County Board of Supervisors took action to approve what we've called the Placer Shares Program. And this is earmarking a portion of the CARES Act funding that Placer County will be receiving. And the CARES Act, of course, is the federal relief fund that is flowing through the state. So they're earmarking $8 million of some $40-plus million in total to provide small business and nonprofit grant assistance. And we're using the month of August to really get the word out on the street about the program. Applications will open at the end of August, August 25th. I think applications will open. And the window will be open for two full weeks. So it's not first come, first served. We don't want the portal to crash. We want to encourage folks that may think that they're eligible to go into our link, and it'll take you in through a series of questions where you, as a business, sort of self-certify that you do meet those eligibility requirements. And we'll have a robust list of ineligible businesses as well once our website goes live this week. Businesses can apply. Well, we'll talk about just for-profit per minute. Fewer than, I think it's nine employees can apply for up to $5,000 grants. And then nine to 50 employees, if they meet the eligibility requirements, can apply for up to a $10,000 grant. And so we know that our businesses right now are in crises, as Dr. Sisson was saying. Being on the monitoring list really has effectively shut down the hardest-hit businesses that were only allowed to really reopen for a couple of weeks following the attestation that we submitted to the state and the variants that we had received. So I'm talking about in-dining restaurants, personal services like hair, nail, massage, those businesses that were closed the longest. And now, when we had to move on to the monitoring list, had to either reclose or modify their operation to only outdoor operations, it really did kind of a double whammy, particularly to those hardest-hit sectors. So in developing the eligibility criteria, we looked hard at EDD data. So those businesses that we saw the highest levels of unemployment insurance claims, where were those coming from? We also did a pretty robust outreach to our stakeholders, primarily our chambers in the cities throughout the county, to see if the data that we were looking at mimicked what they were seeing in their community. And so when the portal opens, you'll see there are Priority One businesses, which are really those that I just described, those in-dining restaurants that weren't able to pivot to a takeout model or an outdoor dining model, and those personal services in particular. We also have agriculture in that Priority One. And then there is a level of Priority Two, still severely impacted businesses, but a little less so. So the priority, the first element, will be to get these grants out to those businesses that are hardest-hit. The Board of Supervisors opted to take $7 million of the $8 million total and earmark that $7 million for small business relief. But they also recognize that, we see this whenever there's a cycle. And if you would take the 2009 recession as an example, when our businesses are in crises and they're closing and they're laying off and furloughing employees, that's when we see the safety net services in the form of our nonprofits get pushed on. So the demand for those safety net services really increase at times where the economy is in trouble. And so that's why the board saw fit to earmark an additional $1 million to prop up our nonprofits that provide those safety net services and/or business organizations that were left out of some of that CARES Act funding. So our 501(c)(6)'s that were not eligible for either the IDAL loan or the PPP, the Paycheck Protection Program, they will also be eligible to apply for these nonprofit grants as well. What else can I say about that? We have roughly 16,000 business establishments in Placer County, including all the cities. We recognize that if everyone were to receive a $10,000 grant, this money, even though $8 million is an enormous and very generous allocation by our board, and in fact, the highest throughout the state that we could find based on our research from other counties that were standing up small business programs, it's still not going to be enough, right? So it's a wonderful opportunity to provide this bridge funding to our businesses who have been able to stay open. We want them to stay open. I always say that 95.5% of the total businesses in Placer County employ fewer than 50 people. So that tells us that we are a small business economy. And it is, in fact, our small businesses that are suffering most. As you know, our chains, our large department stores, our grocery stores, were not impacted. Those were essential businesses from the get-go, so we didn't see them having to close. But we did see our Main Street retail close. We did see all of our restaurants and personal services close. So those are the businesses that we'll be looking at targeting for these eligibility requirements. Once the business submits the application during that application window, and it checks a number of boxes to deem it complete and eligible, it'll go into a lottery. So to make it fair and equitable for all, there will be a lottery conducted, and we're going to do it live. We'll do it on Zoom, so it's very transparent so that we can make sure that across the board, those businesses that met that eligibility requirement have equal chance of being selected for funding. And I think I'll stop there. And if anyone has any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Before we go into questions, I just wanted to real quick interject and add that the Placer Business Resource Center is here for all of the businesses. If you have any questions regarding the guidelines, checklist, site plans that you have to prepare, if you're in need of PPE, whatever the needs are, please call the Business Resource Center. There is staff on hand to answer your calls and to help you with whatever you need, even if you have questions regarding Placer Shares or any other new programs that are coming. So please feel free to give us a call. We're here for you and to help however we can.
And Nicole, would you be able to share the chat or contact information at the BRC? Awesome, thanks. And with that, we'll answer any questions.
So I see you have your hands raised. Go ahead.
Hi, this is Stuart Feldman. I'm Meadow Vista resident. And I'm curious whether businesses that apply, that get in the hopper but don't get the lottery award, will their applications stay live for the next round, if there is a next round?
Absolutely. That's a great question, Stuart. Thank you. The Board of Supervisors in articulating that this initial round of $8 million will probably be, demand will probably far exceed this $8 million. We know that. The board has also saw fit to say, of the remaining $32 million that has been earmarked to reimburse the county for COVID-eligible expenses, if the county does not end up needing or spending down that remaining $32 million or any part of that, there is interest expressed by the board in reallocating some portion of that so that we could, in fact, do a second round of funding. But we wouldn't actually go out with a call for more applications. We'd keep those applications on file so that we could go out and fund some additional businesses. That's a great question, though.
Great, does anybody else have a question for Sherri Conway? I don't see any more hands raised. Sherri and Nicole, thank you so much for coming and sharing.
Our pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so up next, we have our public safety reports. I'm not entirely sure who was able to make it this evening. I see that we have Officer Lucy here from CHP. So if we have someone from the Placer County Sheriff's Office, we also have Chief Gao from the Placer Hill Fire Department. So if we have anyone from CAL FIRE or the Sheriff's Office or Placer Sierra Fire Safe Council, feel free to raise your hand. And I will move you over to be able to talk. So I'm going to go ahead and, Officer Lucy, I think you're good to go.
Hi, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Perfect, all right. Well, hello, Meadow Vista. It's nice to be able to get together again, albeit via the phone. Higher Patrol has been very busy, especially this last month, month of July. We investigated just shy of 200 traffic collisions, which is a pretty good uptick in the collisions. We also arrested just about 30 DUIs for the month of July. That also is a pretty good uptick. I think normally, we've got somewhere between anywhere 20 to 25 arrests with probably 150 to 175 traffic collisions in the area. So people are out and about, moving again. And prior, when everything started back around the January, February, March, we saw a huge decline in all of our activities as there was hardly anybody out traveling the roadways. As many of you can attest, traffic did look like it was back in the '60s and the '70s again. That made our jobs a lot easier, but not a whole lot of contacts were being made during that time. But everything has since gone shot, skyrocketed with the amount of collisions and the arrests. I think June saw an uptick as well. I don't have the numbers for that month or previous, but they did drop significantly early on and have since skyrocketed. So we've been pretty busy out there, not to mention the unprecedented times that we are in. CHP has been responding to the Capitol and the local Sacramento areas just about every weekend for various protesting, and some of which have turned into full-blown riots. So we've been staying real busy with that. And then also, at this time, support for law enforcement across the nation has significantly dropped. We don't see that as a huge problem here in Placer County, thankfully. We have a huge support for law enforcement in this area. So I thank you folks for that. It's a great place to work and an even better place to live. But it has been all-time low for the state as well as the country. Also, in these times, retirements are a normal thing that happen every year for the Higher Patrol. This year, we've seen an uptick in the retirements. And I think this Auburn office is going to have roughly seven folks that are going to be retiring, seven officers. We'll have a new captain coming in before long, some new clerical folks, and our mechanic is also going to be leaving. So we're going to see a huge change to the Auburn office in the coming year. And with those retirements, there's some fiscal impacts to the State of California. Our academy has been closed. That's due to the COVID, as well as the fiscal impacts. That's kind of a double whammy for us. With that being closed and all the retirements taking place, we don't have, typically, the academy runs year-round with three or four classes going through per year. That sends anywhere from, per class, 80 to 100 officers to the field. And those need to replenish the supplies from Los Angeles to the Oregon border and everywhere in between. So with the academy being shut, that really is going to affect how many new officers end up coming to the Auburn area and surrounding locations. So that'll be interesting to see. Traffic complaints, again, I'm the officer that typically comes out and handles the traffic complaints in the Meadow Vista area. I had some time off the month of July, so I wasn't out there a whole heck of a lot. But as I return to work, the month of August, the month of September, I'll be working our nighttime shift, which is 9 o'clock at night till 06:30 in the morning. So I'll be out in your communities during those hours and probably won't see many of you. But hopefully, I can resolve some of the issues that have been taking place during the evening hours. With that, we did have a pursuit of a motorcycle happened earlier today towards the end of our day shift. And that took place, Taylor rode the 193 onto the 80 freeway. And the person that was riding the motorcycle fleeing from the Higher Patrol entered the freeway going the wrong direction. Was involved in a collision. I did not hear any details on injuries. He took off running from the collision scene. So I think it may have been, obviously, not many injuries on his part. But he was apprehended a short time later, so that's always a good thing. And with that, I'll end on that. And does anybody have any questions for the Higher Patrol?
So again, if you want to raise your hand, you just click the bottom button, raise the hand button, or star nine if you're on a phone. I just want to say, in the meantime, that we really appreciate you, Officer Lucy, and all of the law enforcement and fire. This has been a... This has been a particularly difficult time for all, and I know you all are working very hard. So thank you.
We appreciate that. Thank you.
So I don't see any hands raised. So
All right. Well, thank you. Yes, thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right. So we, up next, we have Fire Chief Ian Gao here from the Placer Hills Fire Protection District. Thank you for coming by.
That's my pleasure. Good evening. I've been your fire chief for five days tonight. Although those who don't know me, I was, I've retired three years ago. And after 33 years as your fire chief, so I'm well familiar with the fire department and the area. But I'm thrilled to be back. If anything I can do for any of you, don't hesitate to get ahold of us. Other than that, we're running about 70 calls a month. I beg your pardon, about 130 calls a month. About 70% of those are medical emergencies. And as you know, both of our fire engines, the one in Weimar, the one here in town, are staff of paramedics. So we have a very high level of medical care we offer the community. And we're right now in the middle of fire season, so it's a busy time for us. Thankfully, nothing big going on in the county right now. We did have a large fire in Newcastle last night. That was a, a large fruit shed caught on fire, and the crews were able to keep that to the fruit shed itself. We had very limited spread to the wildland and no injuries. And other than the fruit shed, no damage. So that was a successful evening for us. But we're busy. I'm here for you. I'll make sure I attend all the meetings that I can. And I can always be reached at the office if anybody needs anything. So I'm happy to be back.
Great. Thank you so much. Does anyone have a question for Chief Gao? I don't see any hands raised, Chief. So thank you for coming by. We really appreciate it.
Ma'am, my pleasure.
Up next, we have our community reports. So I just wanted to check in and see, I'm not sure if we have anyone to report for the three community reports. So we have the Community Center, we have the MAC PAC, and Meadow Vista Beautification and Safety. So if anyone would like to report, you're with those organizations and you'd like to report, Stuart, I see your hand raised. So I'll go ahead. So the, if we have anyone to report for any of the other two, then feel free to raise your hand, and I will get to you after Stuart. All right. You are good to go, Stuart.
Thank you. Stuart Feldman here. And I'm going to mention, because we haven't had a board meeting of the Community Center for a couple of weeks, I think. But at this point, we've had some landscaping. I'm reporting on the Meadow Vista Community Center first. And our board has contracted with Cascade Gardens to do landscaping behind the new patio where the, the north wing is available. I'm not sure if it's rentable right now because of ARD policy as far as public meetings. But the outdoor patio is going to be next door to it landscaped on the hillside and a number of other irrigation and other improvements being made. We are consistently trying to raise funds to finish the main hall and the rest of the building. It's a very long process, but we do have a piece of property for sale off of Volley Road on Los Robles. And it is listed, I believe, for $244,000. And the proceeds will go to the Meadow Vista Community Center Building Fund. So you can check with Sierra Pacific Realty, Fred or Catherine, and find out about that property. And we'd very much appreciate any offers as, as, don't feel like you can be embarrassing us. We need to sell that and get some money into the building fund. So that, are there any questions about the Community Center?
Is there any questions? Are there any questions, I should say? I don't see, I see one hand raised, but it was raised from before, 0760. Do you have a question for Stuart, or are you waiting for the, you can unmute yourself if you'd like?
Hi there. It's Patrice. I'm with the
So I just wanted to check and see if you had a question.
Not for Stuart.
Okay, perfect. I just wanted to make sure. All right, Stuart. And I know that we are talking about the Rural Main Streets Grant coming up here. And I know that you guys were working on that with the Beautification and Safety Group. Anything else that you'd like to update us on?
I, I believe we'll get the announcement of the public workshop that'll take place behalf of the group. So I'm going to let the county staff do the presentation.
Great.
Have the committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Stuart. Go ahead, Patrice.
Hi there. Fun to be able to say hi to Chief Ian Gao.
Hi, Patrice.
Are you proud of ARD finally mowing the arboretum? They got the grasses mowed down, including some plants in the front, when somebody else volunteered to help. But things are just sort of on a steady even keel at the arboretum right now, I'm glad to report. Probably do a fall planting if we get some more indication that we'll have a wet fall. So if you see people out there, wear your mask and say hi. So everything's doing okay. Thank you.
Thank you so much for updating us. All right. So we are good with the community report. So up next, we have Nikki Strigan and Katie Jackson from the county. And they are going to talk about the Rural Main Streets Grant.
Good evening, everyone. Nikki, do you want to start our PowerPoint up for everybody who's on the computer? Thanks, Kelly. As Kelly mentioned, my name is Katie Jackson, and I'm an Associate Civil Engineer with the Placer County Department of Public Works. And I'm joined tonight by Nikki Strigan, who is a Senior Planner with the County's Community Development Resource Agency, or CEDRA. And tonight, we're here and we're excited to introduce a new program that we're bringing to Meadow Vista called Rural Main Streets. So this program will focus on the commercial corridor along Placer Hills Road with an emphasis on identifying a vision, boosting economic development, and improving the public's experience along the roadway. To do that, we've partnered with the Sacramento Area Council of Governments, or SECOG, and Caltrans to bring in two national experts into Meadow Vista. And these experts want to hear your thoughts about the corridor. And then they'll propose some simple, straightforward ideas that are easy to implement. So for tonight's presentation, I'll go over some things that the county has done recently along Placer Hills Road. And, and then I'll hand it off to Nikki to describe the Rural Main Streets program. Next slide, please, Nikki.
Yeah, sorry, Katie, does this look okay? Is it, is it a full presentation screen?
No, I'm seeing it in the editing mode.
Hang on one, hang on one sec. Hang on one second. Not that it's How about there?
There we go.
All right.
Thank you.
And
If you could just advance it to the background slide.
There we go.
All right. Thanks, Nikki. So some of you may recall that Placer County has been working on the Placer Hills Road corridor for about three years now. Back in 2017, we were approached by residents here in Meadow Vista that were concerned about pedestrian safety along the commercial core area. We held a workshop with the community to talk about the roadway infrastructure, especially as it relates to the safety of walking or biking along the corridor. And around the same time, the Meadow Vista MAC formed the Subcommittee on Safety and Beautification, which Stuart was talking about earlier. In 2018, we amended the Meadow Vista Community Plan to provide more flexibility and future improvements along Placer Hills Road. In 2019, we laid new asphalt along Placer Hills Road and took that opportunity to improve the bicycle facilities on Placer Hills from I-80 to Combi Road. Around the same time, Nikki and I proposed Meadow Vista for SECOG's Civic Lab Program. Through Civic Lab, we worked with community members to identify some of the challenges that Meadow Vista faces with a focus on revitalizing the commercial corridor. We also identified some key projects to address those challenges, and Rural Main Streets is one of those projects. So we're excited to bring it forward to the community. Next slide, please. So through our work with the Meadow Vista community, several key themes have emerged. We've heard feedback about the infrastructure, like the need for new sidewalks and techniques to slow traffic through the commercial corridor. We also understand that there's a desire to help small businesses start and grow in Meadow Vista, which is probably more relevant now than ever has been before. We've also heard above all that, that it's important to retain Meadow Vista's charm and rural character. And these are just some of the things that we'll discuss during the course of the Rural Main Streets project. Next slide, please. So as you may have guessed, the Rural Main Streets Project is going to focus on the commercial corridor of Meadow Vista, which we're showing on this map as Placer Hills Road from Sierra Vista School to just north of Combi. Rural Main Streets is going to focus on the interaction between the public and private realm. So we'll explore solutions for both the roadway infrastructure as well as the properties and businesses in the area. Next slide. So you all are local experts for this, so might, will come as no surprise. But a few of the challenges that we've identified for Meadow Vista are the pedestrian pathways that are sometimes difficult to navigate, like in this photo. The lack of defined driveways for some properties, the underutilized commercial buildings, and the septic capacity that limits the types of businesses that can operate in town. And while those are some pretty big challenges, we've also experienced many strengths, including a tight-knit community, the variety of different businesses that you have in town, and also the absolutely picturesque environment that's perfect for outdoor recreation. So the focus of the Rural Main Streets is to build on these existing strengths while also identifying what you, or also addressing what you identify as challenges. So at this point, I'll hand it off to Nikki to tell you more about the program.
Great. Thank you, Katie. Nikki Strigan, Placer County Community Development Resource Agency, I'm a planner here. And we are, we're really excited to advance a lot of the work that we developed through the Civic Lab Program with SECOG and move it into this Rural Streets, Rural Main Streets Technical Assistance Program. And so I, you can see on the slide here, and actually first, I want to take a quick pause. I think one of the staff members from SECOG is on. So hello to Greg Chu, who is, SECOG being a very big supporter of the project with funding from Caltrans. I don't think we mentioned the, the amount of the dollars that are being spent and invested here. It's a $20,000 grant, and the purpose of which you can see outlined here above. So one, to help advance the community vision for the corridor. Two, to make more livable, walkable, safe, and economically viable street. And then third, to create a demo project, which really could be a stepping stone for investment in, in the corridor. And you know, our consulting team, the consulting team has really emphasized with that $20,000, they want to make sure that you walk away with something, a very tangible thing, whether it's some kind of benefit to the businesses in the corridor or a kind of real, live, on-the-ground project that shows better pedestrian connections or bike lanes or something along those lines. So I'm kind of excited to see that carry through and put on the ground as something. I do, I do want to make a note, we'll talk more about the demonstration project when we work with our consulting team. But I know traditionally, these are in-person activities. And so we want to note that it's difficult to do under the conditions with COVID-19. So we've talked about either doing an in-person activity if it's safe and consistent with public health guidelines or walking away with a toolkit of some sort that your community can implement and use as far as resources to, to put on the ground. And so the SECOG has actually retained two consulting groups that we'll just mention briefly that are going to be working with your community. And those groups are Civilist Consulting and the Local Government Commission. The, the lead consultant with Civilist is their founder, Michelle Reeves. She has assisted commercial districts throughout the nation, recognizing their strengths, capitalizing on branding, and does work in rural places, too. I think the community, the city of Colfax, actually participated in this program a few years ago. So there, there is a place for rural communities, you know, in this sort of commercial corridor visioning. Paul Zykoski from Local Government Commission is also going to be with us next in a few weeks. And he's worked facilitating public workshops throughout the world, the nation and the world, in fact, on planning processes. He's done a lot of work with Complete Streets and Active Transportation, pedestrian safety and safe routes to schools. So we're really lucky to have these experts working, working with us and your community. Tonight, we're actually launching a community survey to prepare for the virtual workshop that is happening on August 26. So I'm not sure if Stuart mentioned that. But August 26 of this month, we are, our consulting team will be hosting that workshop and running that workshop. But there is a survey that I'll drop into the chat shortly. But it, in fact, well, I won't try to get, get too crazy. I'll, I'll pull it up if I can, but I'll certainly drop it into the, the chat function. Really, it's three basic questions. It's focused on Placer Hills Road in your commercial corridor, what you like about it, what you wish for it, and what if. And so the direction here is to come up with three short, top-of-mind responses to these questions. And that means whatever comes to your mind as far as responding to those questions, we want you to put that down into the survey. You know, it doesn't have to be, it can be pretty fluid as far as what your ideas are, but really basic and simple responses. So you can see the Survey Monkey link here in, in the presentation. But I will drop that link into the chat function. And then we want you to stay tuned for a flyer with the link and some more information on, on the upcoming workshop.
Nikki, I did just drop it into the chat, so
Thank you.
People are looking for it.
Awesome. Thanks, Katie. So here's a quick look at our proposed timeline. August 26, I mentioned, is the virtual workshop that's going to be hosted by the consulting team. It's an initial workshop to receive a presentation on the role of Placer Hills Road and to talk about how rural commercial districts work. They'll also talk about survey feedback and begin talking about a demonstration project. And we'll take a look. My, my next slide is, is entirely on the virtual workshop. But we'll cover, cover those things on August 26. And then looking out to the fall, September through December, we will be meeting with a community advisory group. So Stuart Feldman is a part of that group. Dean Prigmore is actually a part of that group. And we are trying to bring property owners and business owners into the fold of that group as well, just to make sure we've got a good cross-section. But that, that will be, the subsequent meetings with that group will happen between September and December, along with the formulation of a demonstration project. And then finally, we're looking at hopefully either implementing a demonstration project on the ground or the consulting team delivering that toolkit of resources so that something later on can be implemented in the winter of 2020 to 2021. So here's a look at that virtual workshop. I mentioned Wednesday, August 26, it's going to take place from 6:00 to 7:30, also on a Zoom platform. So a link will go out to that at a later date. And I mentioned that you'll receive a presentation on the quote-unquote "role of the road" by Paul Zykoski. And that includes safety and access and the identity and what that means for a rural town center. for a rural town center. From Michelle Reeves, we'll learn about rural commercial districts that include improving sales per square foot. So business owners are certainly going to want to, business owners and property owners are going to want to tune in to that piece, as well as the importance of branding a road. And so branding a place in relation to rural commercial districts. And then we'll discuss the likes and wishes, so feedback, or rather, the input that was provided through the survey, that will be discussed. There's a way that they're going to do breakout sessions, which I'm fascinated to find out about on the Zoom platform, making it as real of a workshop as possible. And then the final piece of that is prioritizing some of those goals for Placer Hills Road and kickstarting formulation of a demo project. So again, really, really excited to kind of keep our work moving forward. And you know, in the context of the county, we're thinking that this project really has relevance to other commercial corridors, other rural commercial corridors throughout the county. So it'll be a nice kind of case study for the rest of the county. You can see, I've put our contact information here at the bottom of this slide for both myself and Katie. And we are more than happy to take some questions at this point.
Great, so it looks like we have two questions for you so far. So feel free, if you want to ask a question or have a comment, to raise your hand, star nine on your phone, or the Raise My Hand button at the bottom. Malcolm, I have unmuted you, go ahead and unmute yourself and you can talk.
Okay, yeah, I just had a question. Didn't know, what distribution list are you using in order to send out the survey and to communicate the details on the workshop?
That's a great question. Kelly, I think we're planning to work through your office. And then we'll work with Stuart Feldman and Dean Prigmore to also get the word out. Our consulting team has made a note that, you know, some in-person calls, so calls to businesses and property owners and those folks and community members are a great way to get attendance up. But we are more than happy to take some feedback, Malcolm, if you've got it.
Yeah, well, I live in Winchester country club, and we generally don't receive community-type information. So, you know, Kelly knows that she can contact the GM within our HOA, and we will distribute it throughout the community. So you can use us as a resource to communicate within Winchester.
That's a great suggestion. I also wanted to mention that we'll be putting it out on various social media feeds that the county uses, like Nextdoor and Facebook, resources to distribute the survey link as well as the Zoom information.
Thank you, Malcolm. Do you have any other questions?
No, I've just, I've been waiting to hear from Stuart or someone about the advisory group. Hang on and be patient.
All right, Stuart, you are up next. Go ahead and unmute yourself and you can talk.
Hi, everybody. Malcolm, yes, I will be in touch. But we will be posting all the information, the Survey Monkey link, and the information about the virtual meeting on the Meadow Vista Safety and Beautification website, on the Facebook page, on Meadow Vista's Facebook page, and on the Chit Chat Meadow Vista Facebook page. There's also a third page that's the Meadow Vista Trails, and they should also have a good distribution list. So we'll get it out there on social media, and we'll try to generate a good response to the surveys.
Great, thank you. Does anybody else have any questions? I don't see any hands raised. Thank you so much for coming, and thank you for all your work you've done on this. This is great.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kelly.
Thanks for having us.
All right, so up next, we do have on our agenda, next we have Supervisor Gustafson giving some updates with the county. She is joining in just a few minutes. So I thought that I would do the question and answer portion first, and then Supervisor Gustafson can jump on and give her updates. Does anyone have any questions, comments for the county, for Supervisor Gustafson, anything like that? Does anyone have anything they would like to discuss with the group, similarly to public comment in other meetings, but yes. Go ahead, Stuart, you are good to go.
I have, I have to communicate my disappointment in not having met with the owners of that property where the trail is trying to be reestablished along the county. I have not met with them. I think the Corona issue has gotten in the way. Plus, it's just been really difficult to try to get my intermediary available. She's got young children and has a full-time job. So trying to make it happen, I will do my best and report hopefully for our next meeting.
Thank you, Stuart, I really appreciate it. All right. Malcolm, go ahead and unmute yourself and you're good to go.
Okay, I just wanted to give a quick update on Winchester's. We're going to continue to pursue putting in a gate into the rear entrance of Winchester. We did a survey within the community to see if there was support within the community to pursue it, because it's going to cost quite a bit of money. And so the survey came back very favorable. And so we did some additional work, meeting with traffic engineers and road consultants to try to get our arms around the costs associated with this project. We now have those costs, so we're going to go for a formal vote, probably within the next month within the community, because it's going to cost, like I said, individual lot owners some money to install the gate and to pursue it within the county. So that'll go out for a formal vote, probably within the next month or so. And then depending on the outcome of that vote, then we will then pursue it with the county and the city residents.
Great, thank you, Malcolm. Stuart, you're good to go, unmute yourself and you can.
A question for Malcolm about that project. Is that at the side where the park access is, that ball field? Is that, is that the side where you're talking about a gate?
No, we're talking about the rear entrance off of Meadow Vista Road, that's, you know, over by the.
Near Sherwood?
Yes.
Across from Sherwood, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, nothing, nothing at the front gate or the front entrance at all, just that rear entrance there.
I was thinking along Conifer, there's no bank route, that side, there's that park access, but.
Yeah, no, yeah, we're not, we're not.
Okay.
Yeah, and the idea, Stuart, I think I've mentioned it, that one of the other MAC meetings is that, you know, what we're, we're getting, and Officer Luthy, well, he's already hung up, but we've been having traffic issues, speeding issues, and we're finding that our community is being used somewhat as a thoroughfare.
Yeah.
And so we're trying to eliminate that. And this is the approach we're taking. And we've been keeping Officer Luthy involved and engaged, unfortunately, because we've had dirt bike riders and motorcycle riders and other vehicles speeding through our community. And we're hoping by putting a rear gate, you'll still be able to leave the community without being a resident, but hopefully it'll dissuade people from coming in and using us as a thoroughfare to get to Highway 80.
Great, thank you. Okay, and then I have 0670, is that you, Patrice? Go ahead, no.
I had a, I had a quick question about the gate that was just. Yeah, on Ridgemore, I'm assuming. Is this a gatehouse? Is this a gate across the road? What, how is it going to function? Because during a fire season, it is a wonderful escape route for some people.
Yeah, well, we're in the process of doing our due diligence around the type of gate. And so we are working with the, we're working with Kurt before he retired. So we've got the fire chief, he will be engaged. And like I said, we've got consultants that are also engaged in helping us determine what's the best gate and the safest gate to put in. So we don't, I don't have the answer to that yet.
Okay, great, thanks.
It will be an unmanned gate, it won't be a, you know, a gatehouse there.
Okay.
Great, thank you. Does anyone else have any comments or questions that they want to share? Feel free to raise your hand. I see that Supervisor Gustafson has joined us.
Hi.
We're ready for updates whenever you're ready.
Oh, you're already ready for me?
Yes.
Great, well, hi, everybody. Again, my apologies for being late. I'm down in wonderful 110-degree weather in Phoenix, helping my dad out a bit down here, so. Thanks for bearing with me, being a little late. So Kelly, earlier in the meeting, did Dr. Sisson or Jeff Brown go through all the statistics on COVID?
The Dr. Sisson was on, and she did relay the Meadow Vista numbers. And then she talked about the testing delays and the reporting glitch. And then she talked about how the state has been, has frozen their monitoring list.
Okay. All right, so I think the best update I can give you is that the Board of Supervisors is still concerned and asking questions of the governor. We were crafting a letter to the governor to ask what the process was for getting off of the monitoring list once your numbers fall lower, so that some of these businesses that have been so closed for so long can reopen. And our numbers were headed down, and I think even today with the numbers up. But we know the numbers are being under-reported right now. So that's probably part of why the state won't let anyone off the list. But as far as I know, no counties, once they've gone on the list, have gotten off the list. So those types of businesses, the gyms, the personal, the salons, personal services, theaters have all stayed closed. And, you know, I think to all of us on the Board of Supervisors, we've asked for evidence of why those particular businesses pose a higher risk than many other activities that we're seeing, and hope to get answers from the state. We continue just to be told they're high-risk, yet so many of our salons and gyms have taken extreme precautions and really spent a lot of money to get their businesses ready and open and compliant with the state's guidelines, just to be shut down again. So we'll continue to work on that. The new dashboard, we've gotten quite a bit of feedback on the new dashboard the county is using, that it's, it doesn't look the same and is a little more confusing. So we're open to feedback on that. And I know Dr. Sisson and Jeff Brown are making changes and trying to accommodate some of the requests we're seeing from our constituents, because it was hard to compare when we were used to the old dashboard. We also, I wanted to update you on Yankee Gyms Road and a lot of the issues you've heard there, as well as on the issues of crowding and tourism throughout the 5th District, and whether it's Hidden Falls, whether it's Chanky Gyms, whether it's Sugar Pine Reservoir, the Truckee River, Lake Tahoe, throughout the district, the canyon. We are having extreme numbers of users in all those areas, coming from the urbanized areas up to the more rural communities to escape. We did anticipate that people wouldn't travel as far and that we would see more use of our public lands. And part of the challenge we have is there's so many different management partners on these public lands. So it's not something the county can control on its own. And we need collaboration with a lot of agencies. So specifically with Yankee Gyms, we had State Parks, the Placer County Sheriff's Office, CHP, Placer County Fire, and the county to address the parking and the public health and safety access points for that area. Those of you who've been down Yankee Gyms know how narrow that road is. And there were up to 300 vehicles parked along that road. I guess last weekend, we, they wrote, I think two weekends ago, they wrote over 100 citations. This last weekend, it was down to 40 on Saturday and 30 on Sunday. So between the signage and the partnership with State Parks and everyone, it seems people are better, more compliant than they were. There's still concern about the congestion and the road not being accessible for emergency response vehicles. So we're, the group is continuing to meet and talk about what else we can do in that situation for Yankee Gyms, but also we're talking about all the public access points. Last week at the Board of Supervisors, we signed our contract for 2020, 2021 fiscal year with CalFire. And we increased that contract to deal with a fire marshal position and to augment it as well to enforce our hazardous vegetation program that we expanded. We adopted an ordinance earlier this year and working with code enforcement to put more resources behind inspections in response to concerns from the customer, from constituents of areas where there's hazardous vegetation, non-maintained lots, some people's properties, et cetera. We also proposed some non-county uses of the CARES Act funding. We agreed to put at least $8 million into the Placer Shares Program, which would be opportunities for grants to small businesses and nonprofits. $8 million sounds like a lot, but when you look at the number of businesses that have been impacted through COVID, you know, it, it doesn't offer a lot to a lot of folks. But we're hopeful that by focusing on small businesses and those that have been impacted the worst during this pandemic, that we will get those funds out and into hands of businesses to help them survive this situation. The grant portal goes live August 25th, and the deadline is the 7th. Sherry Conway's been very involved with this, as so is Jane Christensen from the county office. And Sierra Business Council will be overseeing the grant program for the businesses. The awards may be done through a lottery, depending on the demand we see. The thought was versus first come, first served, that we should do it through a lottery system with prioritization of those businesses that haven't received other assistance previously, maybe weren't able to apply or weren't able to qualify for some of the other PPP programs and things. And those businesses that have suffered the greatest impacts. So then those would be prioritized, and depending on the number of those, a lottery system. I'm very hopeful, based on what we're seeing right now with the county's budget, that we may be able to put more money into this program to help our businesses survive this. So stay tuned, I'm hopeful that we'll be able to augment that 8 million. Might not be a lot more, but certainly some. And as we look at any additional funding out of Washington or through the state, we'll be looking at that carefully to see how we can put it in the hands to keep our communities economically viable, as well as healthy. We also adopted last week at the. We also adopted last week at the board meeting a ban on alcohol consumption on the DeWitt Campus, the Placer Government Center Campus. As many of you know who've been by there, there's been a growing homeless population there. And while we can't remove them without places for them to go, we can try to deter some of the illegal behaviors that have been going on out there and reduce the desire for them to be locating to that location. And so that gives tools to the Sheriff's Department to be assisting in enforcement out there at the Placer Government Center. We also entered into an MOU with the Bureau of Reclamation for hazardous fuels treatment in the canyon. Additional, some additional lands that the Bureau of Reclamation owns. And we did an amendment for additional consultant services to respond to the volumes of comments we've gotten on the Hidden Falls project. So a lot of, two long days of meetings. We also, we also banned alcohol on the Truckee River. We did some things for the early in the meeting on Monday for up in the Tahoe area that were relevant up there more than down in this neck of the woods. And typically it's the July meeting is a Tahoe meeting. And so some of those items on Monday would have been heard up in Tahoe had we had been back to real live meetings at this point. We are also moving forward with the, and this was done earlier in June, the proposed ordinances for the Charter Review Committee recommendations that came out of the last year of Charter Review Committee, reviewing the Charter of Placer County and making some recommendations. I think they're all non-controversial. The, there were a couple that were a little more controversial that got dropped, but the four recommendations of changes to the Placer County Charter includes splitting the Civil Service Commission's administrative and hearing duties apart so that there's really independence between somebody bringing a case up to the to hearing and having a different body hear that versus the administrative functions that now go to HR for the Civil Service Commission. Also removing the requirement that the Board of Supervisors confirm appointed department heads, allowing that discretion to the CEO. And he'll report to us or she would report to us, but that would be their decision. And removing some of the bid thresholds that were contrary to the state law, our charter was written and adopted a number of years ago and our bid requirements were lower than some of those that the state has now changed. So they'll be in compliance with the state. And the final recommendation is that the charter be amended to require that any elected officers or officials maintain continued residency in Placer County throughout the duration of their service. So all four of those I think are pretty non-controversial and make sense and are moving forward on the November ballot. We extended, as I think many of you know, we extended our urgency ordinance to reduce the regulations on outdoor signage and allowing restaurants and others to expand out of their footprints of their buildings. And that was originally passed May 26th. We extended it July 7th. It will be in effect through October at this point, hoping that by then we have some resolution on indoor dining and, and some of the other activities. So trying to again, help our businesses recapture as much of what they've lost as possible. And finally, we launched on July 1st, our new Placer County 211 referral system. It's a phone line that you can call 211. And it's a free confidential multilingual information line and website that connects people with services and resources in the community. Similar to 911, except non-emergency types of services. So I think that's about it. There's so much going on. I'm much better at answering questions sometimes than I am at reading all these reports. So if you have any questions, please feel free to address them my way. And thanks again for your patience while I was so late to the meeting.
So if anyone has any questions, feel free to raise your hand. Star nine or the button at the bottom.
They're asleep.
It's been a jam-packed meeting. Oh, Stuart, go ahead and unmute yourself. You can talk.
I just wanted to say thank you. Someone has to thank you.
Well, thank you, Stuart. It's certainly been something I didn't sign up for, right? You sign up to serve your community and a pandemic is not an easy time to set public policy and it's a no win.
Well, you're doing good. You're doing real good. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm definitely trying to stay balanced throughout this. It's, it's it's really, it's due to a lot of great people in Placer County that we're doing as well as we are and supporting each other and supporting our small businesses and supporting our health and wellbeing. And so thank you.
Dick, I've unmuted. You can unmute yourself and talk. There we go. Yes, you're good now.
Yeah, we live on Sherwood, right across from where the gate is predicted to go in. And that is a county road. That is a right of way. And we use it. Yes, we do. And we would use it during fire for sure. And I don't see how you can block off a public right of way.
And it was part of the discussion that Nikki was
No, Malcolm brought it up.
Okay.
In the comments and then, but I've unmuted him and he Malcolm, you're unmuted, so I think you should be good to go.
Yeah, no. You know, it will go to, I mean, we're going to follow the county's process. I mean, it is a public road. And, and it does fall under a public road closure. So we are going through and working with, with the county and then going through whatever process is required. So, so there will be you know, community input before anything is made. Yep. We're not doing it in a vacuum.
All right. Well, this is the first we've heard of it.
Well, I brought it up at two previous MAC meetings, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Does anybody else have any questions? I don't see any more hands raised.
Great. Okay. Well, I hope this was helpful. Again, my apologies for being late, but we can continue to do these once a month virtually. I know it's not ideal, but in these times, I don't think anything's very ideal. So at least we can continue to communicate on issues throughout the region as well as those that impact Meadow Vista. So happy to put another one together next month and if, if this was helpful. I know, you know, we didn't cover library services and we were looking into more issues with the library that had come up at a couple of the meetings previously. But honestly, with during COVID, most of the libraries have been shut down and additional library services have been cut almost everywhere. So for those of you that were interested in that topic, I think we'll bring that back in the fall with a plan moving forward. So and with that, if there's nothing else, Kelly, I think you can adjourn.
Thank you all for coming.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Have a good evening. Be safe. Stay well.